You know, bad guys. Oh shoot, I went through all that and then I didn't grab my laptop like a doofus.
Alright.
I got cookies though. Kristen had cookies.
It's now an hour long session of sitting on the comput- on the phones next to each other on the couch.
Depends on what your sources, right?
Conversation to call to order the finance, school board finance committee meeting February twenty fourth. We actually have a couple agenda items, but we can add, I have a couple to talk through at the end. So just gonna get an update from Kate on the budget process. Just do a quick debrief on the joint workshop. And then we have a, I can give you guys an update on one that's gonna be on the town council agenda. That was really, and then I, I know April had sort of a other business question around TIF districts, Kate, which I had sent you in advance.
Yeah, and I, I was trying to sort of ponder what that, what the question really is. And I did sort of go and do a smidge of research, but I don't, you know, I'll wait until we talk about what the question is and see if I have any useful information to share.
And the only other thing I wanted to talk through, if we have time, is just go through our calendar. Because the meeting dates that we had originally booked in were based off of like the calendar that we had proposed, not what it currently is. So we just need to see if we need to adjust any of this.
Well, and I, yeah, I had a little bit of a wonder talking with Kelly this morning. She said she was able to get us chambers for, this is the big workshop, the two day workshop. She built us chambers for the first day, but she was having a heck of a time with the second day, the evening one, which is March twenty fifth, which is a Wednesday, I think. And at the moment, she has us booked and she was gonna reach out to Sarah too at the study center at the high school, which is a lovely space. It's kinda, you know, not the super publicist space, if that's a word. And you can certainly, we can certainly get people into that room if we need to.
Can we accommodate the size of group that we were expecting though? Cause this room was pretty full last year, if I remember.
For the budget workshop? Yeah, it, it should be able to. Yeah, it's a, I don't know if you've ever been in that room. It's laid out with tables and chairs around so that the kids can use it, but you could actually create a pretty decent sized workshop table situation like this. It's obviously, it's not ideal and Kelly's still sort of trying to figure stuff out. But that was something that she and I just talked about today, that I wasn't aware of until just now.
Well, let's do that schedule at the end. Do you wanna just give us a budget process of you?
Alright, so I know you folks have had a look at the little items on the leadership council's calendar, what we've been up to. Where we are at right now is we've been through the individual building and department meetings, the sort of one-on-one meetings. Those happen between January twenty first and thirty first, a couple of weeks there. Each meeting runs a couple of hours and it was, it was a little different this year. It was kinda cool. We had both Sandy and Diane at the table. And both of them being new, the rest of our central office leadership team committed to do some tag teaming and be in the room with us as well and bring it, you know, their own perspective. Allison was really helpful. I think, you know, we had some really good conversations with her being there with the other building leaders. Monique is generally always there with me because she has that K twelve, what's going on with curriculum kind of perspective. You know, making sure that people are budgeting sufficient funds for the programming that she knows is gonna be out there. Dawn was in on quite a few of the conversations, the, from the IT department. And it was just, it, I mean, I'll let Diane say whether she thought it was productive. I felt like it was, we had some really good conversations and people were really
Yeah, I think it was very productive.
Organized.
Also demonstrated how, you know, whether it be a building or department, you know, everyone had really taken into account the scope of what they were responsible for and trying to, you know, determine what are the next best steps and, you know, what their needs were. So, you know, and, and again, I think you'll see that when we present that, you know, there are certainly some needs that we have identified that we're realistic about knowing that we're not going to be able to address in this particular budget cycle. That being said, I think it's still really important that we put all those things out there. Right?
Yeah, and that, that leads to the next piece of, of what we've been working on, which is the investment proposals. And I did a bad job of grabbing things to come down here, but you'll remember that last year we came up with a graphic that was, that here's the budget from FY twenty. Here's the budget, the level services budget from FY twenty one. Here's what it would look like when we take into account people that might be retiring or positions that we might not be filling at the same level. And then from there, going into what are the things that we need to add? And the adds, last year, we had sort of requirements first in sort of a pink box. And it was about, mostly about special services programming, where we needed to add funding into the budget to accommodate kids coming in with IEPs and, you know, some of the services that would need to be provided in the year we're in now, that were more than what we already had in place. This year, I'm looking at doing it with two pink boxes, if you will. One pink box is the special services compliance regulated, we have to do this stuff. And then the second box, I'm envisioning being around enrollment and growth. Because again, you can't really say responsibly, you know, here come all the kindergartners and we're not going to necessarily add any teachers to, to keep our class sizes where we would like them to be. Whether our focus is on instruction and, you know, efficiency and quality of instruction or on student safety or on, you know, keeping our teachers from going off a cliff or any of those really good reasons. I'm seeing that as a sort of a pink thing as well, as like, we really need to do this, we really need to do this. And then under that, we'll have one, two, three, four, five, here are the things that we would like to add in. And depending on where that takes us in terms of our tax ask for the town, then, you know, how, where do we draw that line that says, well, this is what our budget proposal is going to look like? So we've spent actually a couple of weeks on that back and forth between the leadership team and the Colton team, central office leadership team. And we've got a draft of that that we'll be sharing with leadership team again tomorrow.
Of the template or of like the actual amounts?
How things are ordered or prioritized. We've got placeholder amounts in there. Yes, exactly, exactly. So then the missing piece is, well, how do we know what we can afford? And in this little parallel track that I'm on right now, I'm finishing up the level services budget. Optimistically, I'd like to say I would have that done by the end of this week. I'm always very optimistic. I'm, my goal is by the next leadership team meeting, which will be a week from tomorrow, to be able to say, here's, here's what level services look like. We've been like, like we said, through all of the department meetings and we got all the feedback from everybody, but there's a few open pieces, some central office stuff that I'm working on and some stipend calculations that I'm working on. Spent a lot of time in facilities this past weekend. It was very exciting. Actually, I, I say that, you know, in a silly way, but it, it was actually really cool because I was finding that we were doing really well on some of the energy costs that I hadn't really anticipated seeing savings in this year. And then looking forward, we just signed two contracts, one for natural gas, the commodity natural gas, and the other for fuel oil. And both of them are reduced prices for starting next, with next school year. One starts right in July and the other one starts in November, which is the beginning of the heating season.
Good thing you left those in before today.
Yeah, exactly. And, yeah, and thank you. Why can't I think of the energy people who are going to help us find additive energy services are the ones that helped us figure out when to lock in. They're like, they're awesome, super, super awesome.
Kate, just one thing I wanna confirm with you, just on how you're talking about laying out the investment proposal. And I think I interpreted correctly when you said that you would include growth and enrollment numbers in the required bucket.
Yeah, and I, and I think we'll talk about labeling, right? Because, I mean, you could say it's required. Well, it's not really required. You can have a class size that's higher than what you would prefer. I'm, I'm seeing it as two separate things. One is like, you gotta do this cause the law says so. And then the other is, we really wanna do this because this is best practice and, and this is our policy. So we did talk about that quite a bit last year. Like, what do you mean when you say something's required?
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to be really careful about that cause that's where we can get ourselves into some trouble with the public when we say like this
We have to do this.
It was like the unified basketball conversation, right? Which is super uncomfortable.
Right, right. And, and I think that the growth piece, I mean luckily, I think we're in a really different place with that. I'm sure we'll talk about that, about the joint workshop. I think we're in a place where people are actually recognizing that much more than they were a year ago. And, you know, but it is a decision point, right? You could say, actually, we're not gonna add a teacher here. We're going to have class sizes that are higher and, you know, we might shift things around so that the second graders have bigger classes than the kindergartners or however that works. You know, it's, it's a decision point and it's a choice. It's not a requirement. But I think that we should try to call it out in, in a clear way that says that it's not really, I don't quite know how to use the words. It's like, it's not a choice. It's, it's forced on you to some extent because your circumstances are changing. So you're being responsive to the circumstances. It's a choice to the extent that you don't have to respond to those circumstances.
It's a necessity if we want to maintain our values and structure of
Right, you wanna be consistent in terms of the educational experience that that kindergartner is gonna get versus the kindergartner who came before or after. So it's, it's kinda like that. So the other piece that we're working on is budget book. We've talked a lot about the monster book and how we really don't want necessarily to have the monster book this year. We wanna be more streamlined, we wanna be more focused, we wanna be more, you know, as much as we enjoy having all this content in there, that is really fun to read and really interesting to us at least. We wanna be more targeted on, you know, talking about who are we, what are we doing and what's the budget ask? So tomorrow's leadership council meeting, we have a big chunk of time for folks to work on their sections. We've already talked quite a bit about what we could remove and what we could keep and how it would look different. And so that's gonna be this, this week and, and the following week. And just trying to kinda streamline things and remember who's the audience. You know, who, who's gonna read it? And, you know, hopefully deliver something that helps us at the budget workshop, like an anchor piece that we can use as a resource, but then also might lend itself to pulling out some material to be shared with the public.
When will you have those available to the board?
The budget books? It'd be the week before the workshop, if I live that long.
Kate has been doing an incredible job with budget. I, I'm not sure how she is sleeping.
She does sleep because I have that cold.
Well, I didn't show it, cause she was like down for the count before vacation week.
I actually had to sleep. It was very sad. I lost like two days. It was terrible. But, you know, that's okay. I'm better now. And we got cookies and, you know, coffee and stuff. So that, that's really kind of where we're at and what's going on. And I did have a concern, I brought my note about the, that you had sent to Kelly about the meeting invites and where we are on the calendar, where things fit in. So do you wanna segue to that? Do you have questions?
The only other thing you had mentioned about the budget was the copier fleet replacement?
Oh yeah, and that actually is kind of a separate conversation. Cause it's, it's really, it's about the purchasing policy and how we're gonna attack the need for replacing some of the copiers. So I would, I would keep that separate. I did forget to talk about some of the assumptions that we're making right now in level services. And this is something that we usually have some kind of a slide about when we do the presentation, public and our workshop, you know, when we're, when we're digging in deeper, it's, you know, what are, what are your guesses? So big guesses right now are Anthem, which I'm guessing at an increase of six percent, which is an average of recent years. If it's more than that, a percentage point usually runs a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So it's a big chunk. We're hoping to get some guidance on that from Anthem, at least like the top tier rate in March, but I'm not sure when. So that's a big wonder. But we face that every year and we, we adjust. Delta dental is a smaller number. I'm doing that at plus four percent. Maine pers doesn't change this year on the teacher group, which is nice. They have a plus point one percent on the municipal side on the PLD group, which is, you know, not hugely impactful. And of course, open contracts right now for teachers and then starting negotiations for the support staff, which if you look at those two bargaining units, that's like all of our staff. The rest of us are just a little sliver, a little, a little piece. So it'll be interesting to see how we make out this week. Is there still a negotiated, negotiations meeting on Wednesday? I'm excited to hear how that turns out. And then the last piece that's out there is we actually did get subsidy information, which was really exciting. I have a copy of the preliminary ED two seventy nine. And if the legislature supports the governor's budget proposal, we could be looking at seven hundred and, almost seven hundred sixty thousand dollars more in subsidy this year.
More?
More than the current year.
More than what we got?
Yeah.
Something last year, is that right?
We had an increase of, yeah, close to six hundred thousand last year. So what's happened is that we've bottomed out on losing subsidy two years ago. And as we've become minimum receivers, now we fall under the statute that says that we get, we get our subsidy based on our special education costs from the prior year. And of course, our special education costs continue to go up. And the portion of the special education costs that are being funded by the state, that statute has also increased a little bit too. So it was forty percent year one, we were minimum receivers and it went to forty-five. This year, it's supposed to go to fifty percent of those costs. So, I mean, in a sense, we're in a really nice position because we're not going to spend any less on special education costs. And if that's the way that our subsidy is going to be calculated, then we're gonna continue to grow that until we, if we ever do climb out of minimum receiver status. And it's, it's all about how we, as a community, look compared with other communities in the state of Maine. It's not so much about your sort of static status, but whether you increase in enrollment, whether you decrease in enrollment, whether you increase in your taxable valuation or decrease in your taxable valuation. And, you know, Scarborough looks good compared with our neighbors and will probably continue to do so as long as the economy stays the way that it is. So that's, that's a lot. That's a big data dump. So do people have thoughts or questions or?
That's good news. I saw that floating around. I had heard that floating around on social media today. You said seven sixty, right? Not seven fifty?
Seven hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. And of course, it does need to pass the legislature and actually become the budget.
To talk to your legislators.
So yeah, go out and tell your legislators that you you wanna support the governor's budget and you wanna increase funding to education. I think it would be, one of the other nice things about being a minimum receiver is that it's, it's kind of unlikely that ours would change unless something changed really radically at the state level. Simply because we aren't getting our allocation based on what everybody else is getting. We're getting it based on that statute. So they can't really go lower if things should change in Augusta. So that's kinda nice too.
Just, you wanna look at the schedule real quick while we're talking budget?
I think that's a great idea.
So do you guys have, if you guys don't have it in front of you, let me just send it to you real quick.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, that'd be great. I've got a lot of tabs.
Yeah, it's, if you're, or if you're in the finance committee folder, it is in there.
So what we've been kinda building up to is, as a leadership team, is, is those workshop days on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And the idea behind that is to allow us to get, get that material into your hands and have it explained to you and, you know, have that opportunity for the give and take and the questions and answers prior to first reading. And then have our first reading be prior to the town council's first reading. So we're presenting them with a budget that they can then vote on the following week. So that was our original goal, was to try to kinda push the process up a little bit more. We ended up pushing it not as far as we would have liked, but actually that's keeping me from going crazy. So I'm, I'm not unhappy about that.
So right now, we have the meetings booked this March sixteenth, thirtieth, and April sixth. If we did the sixteenth.
What would we do with it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could have a preview of the budget book maybe, but I don't know that we, if you guys want or feel like you need that. It would be nice to see a copy of the investment proposal. I feel like we did talk, we spent a lot of time talking about that last year.
We tackled that in a pretty good way, I think, because I think our sort of basis for conversation was, okay, well, we get level services and we're gonna spend time talking with the leadership team about what's in there and why it's in there. You know, we, we feel fairly confident with that, so let's talk about the new stuff and let's talk about where that, you know, how we feel about that and how we're gonna advocate for it. So yeah, I mean, I would say at that point, if we wanna keep the sixteenth out there, that might be a way that we could spend some time. Alternatively, we could just say, you know, keep, take the sixteenth out and keep the thirtieth, at which point you've got everything in your hands and we could really do a deeper dive. Did you say the seventeenth?
Sixteenth.
Just sixteenth, okay.
Sixteenth and thirtieth, yeah. My personal preference would be to have that information in advance of the workshop so that we can ask questions to you guys in advance that other people might ask. You can be prepared for them.
Yeah, and, and part of our focus is, is trying to be more, better at articulating the new stuff. You know, and, and talking about it. Because it's funny, when we were looking at the budget book from last year, we were taken aback a little bit by like, okay, here's the story of the school, here's the introduction, here's the facts, here's all the cool things that are going on, here's all the stuff. And then there's this little box that says, and our budget proposal is, you know, I want a new teacher. And it doesn't, you know, why is there not more going on in that little box? And so that was one of the things that our team brought up and said, well, really shouldn't, you know, if this is the, the big ask that's new and different, shouldn't we be spending a little more time on that? So that ties into what you're saying.
And it's showcasing our schools and our departments, something that happens somewhere different. Right?
Yeah, and that's been, that's been a struggle, right? Yeah, because Well, it's the pendulum, right? Like we, I think that the budget book has kinda been developed slowly over the last few years in a response to people saying that
Tell me more, tell me more.
We needed more, we had to have more, like what, you know, and then it wasn't enough to just put out spreadsheets because then people would want, you know, you know, then, then nothing made sense without any context. So then it was like, well, let's write a paragraph and give it some context. And then it was, well, if they have a paragraph, then this should have a paragraph. And now we have this big, beautiful budget book, which is so much work. You know, and really the audience is
To just find out about the budget, it's like
Get, get me to the point.
Where is that page?
Right, right. Yeah, and I think the town went through that same sort of art, right?
I would agree with that.
You know, back in the good old days, I'd say, here's your spreadsheet. You know, here's your GL accounts, here's what we had last year, here's what we want this year. And maybe there'd be a few extra columns in there. But, you know, that, I, I would never really go back to that because I feel like it's, I feel like that is the same thing as me giving the public a financial report and not putting my little story in. Because how do you know how to read the financials? How do you know if this is good, bad, or indifferent if you don't live in it? But there has to be a little happy medium there, right?
Sure, I can appreciate that.
So we have a goal. I mean, we're, the, the team is, is trying to get everything from, you know, some of the departments and, and sections in the book have like ten pages, twelve pages. What if we had three or four pages is what we're saying, is, you know, not to take all the content out, but let's squish it up a little bit. And maybe only half the really cute pictures of you.
Okay, so keep the sixteenth. I don't know, so on the first, we have the town manager and superintendent present town budget to town council. That's really just Sandy and Tom. So there shouldn't be much that we need to do other than maybe like if Sandy wants to like run by us. I don't remember how really we did that last year in July. Just kinda sat there.
Yeah, I think it's just
Well, in, in this past year, what we had done was, we had had the budget workshop that same day, like the day before and that same day. So we were all coming out of it going, oh wow, we're completely immersed in school budget. And then we sat through this sort of public reveal and I think you guys probably felt a little bit grounded in our part of it at least, just through going, through the way that it timed out. So in this case, you'll actually have that a week before we get to that point.
I don't necessarily see a need, a need right now for the meeting on the I don't necessarily see an immediate, a need right now for the meeting on the thirtieth. I think we had originally had that in because we had moved things up, so we can cancel that or we can just leave it in if you guys want and cancel it as we get closer if we don't need it.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem leaving it in. If something were to come up or come out of the two-day workshops that we wanted to discuss as a committee before it gets presented to the. School board. I don't anticipate that happening and I think that there's probably a high likelihood that having full board in those two, two-day workshops and then. Everyone's gonna feel ready to have it presented at our public meeting, but. I don't mind keeping it in there as a placeholder, even if we label it as that right now and. Make that call later on.
Yeah, I, I would agree, like keep it as needed.
Really difficult to add things once you take them away, cuz something else goes in that box. Cool. And then the other one was um. I mean, Kate, when else would we, uh, April sixth was the other one. I don't know if, again, like, I think we had.
Sometime between the second and the first reading and the second reading for us, basically. Um, we wanted to get something on the calendar and just say, look. We wanna be able to sit as a team and help process through any questions or concerns so that we know when we get to second reading. That everybody's kind of satisfied with what the product is.
But now that I'm looking at it, I think what we should do is move it to after the town council first reading before. Our second reading.
When is town council first reading?
The first, with the April.
It's a week later.
They separate that presentation from their first reading. Uh, because for the same kinda reason that we did. The way that we did it was they wanted to have time to have the presentation, get the stuff, process through it, and then do first reading.
So they'll see it on the first, but then they won't.
They'll vote on it a week later.
So they do the special meeting?
So between the eighth?
Yeah, I just don't have that.
And the seventh?
Eight, between the eighth and the sss.
Seventh of May? The, we have the um.
There's the public hearing.
At the board meeting on the sixteenth of April, we've got the public hearing. Do we wanna do something that's sort of responsive to that? Is that right? I'm looking at your email, I don't have the.
No, it is, it's on April sixteenth is the school board meeting that is the public hearing.
It really, I mean, the, the working sessions could be almost any time between our first reading and our second reading, just making sure that we have. Confidence that the product that's going to second reading is, is what we all want it to be.
We're about like the twenty-eighth, Monday, the twenty-eighth of April.
So are we taking the sixth out?
I don't think we need it. Do you, Kate?
April sixth is what we have now. Um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's early, you know? I think particularly if we're waiting for some of these unconfirmed numbers to come in.
Nothing will have changed.
The closer that we get to the second reading, the more likely we are to have good numbers on a lot of things. So Sarah, what was the day you said?
Uh, the day I proposed is Monday, is if we wanna stick with Mondays, the twenty-seventh of April. Cuz our second reading is Thursday after that. Or we could do the May fourth, Monday, May fourth.
I'd vote for the twenty-seventh. I may the fourth be with you. Okay, I'm ready. I'd, I'd vote for the twenty-seventh, um, just assuming. You know, please universe that we have good data at that point and then that gives us a little time to do some. Wiggles and tweaks before that second reading if we, if we wanna create something that's a little different.
What time is that?
What time, make sure you guys, five thirty? Is that tough for you?
Cool, five thirty?
I can ask Kelly to cancel the sixth and to add this twenty-seventh in tomorrow. And the other thing. I know I had a text chain with Leanne about this. I can look afterwards, but we wanted to make sure town council was invited. And Leanne and I had debated on who should invite them because they have like very. Much more appropriate protocol.
And we had talked about me sending, forwarding them the invite, but then I got snarled up with Kelly about where the workshop was gonna be on the second day.
So we don't have that yet?
We don't really have that yet. Um, I mean, I suppose, I, I hate to say this, but we could go back and look at that day on March twenty-fifth, it's a Wednesday. And see if we could change the day up and find the venue. By changing the date.
Don't all the staff, doesn't all staff already have that in their calendar?
So it's a question of, you know, what's more important.
Some space in this town to have a meeting.
Isn't that an interesting thing? I was just thinking about that today. It's like, wow, you know, maybe there is something about. Maybe, that's, we already tried that. And I was surprised because I thought the hard one was gonna be the school day one, the one that's in the morning. Um, but chambers was open in the morning and then I think Wednesday night is probably, you know, some. Every Wednesday kinda meeting.
What about the room that we had the workshop in last week?
Multi-purpose room?
Multi-purpose.
At the high school. I'm sure Kelly's.
She's probably checked.
Looked at whatever there is, um, but I know she also wants to talk to you about it. Tell you what's going on, so.
Well, either way, I'll make sure that they get the invite, whether it comes from me, you as the liaison, or Leanne. Cuz I wanted to come with a message and not just like a forward.
I think procedurally, it should probably come from Leanne, but.
Cuz we would like, if we can, to have the whole council. There is many people who can come because it just, it's such a great. Opportunity, you guys know. To just kind of fast forward your understanding of, of what's in the proposal and just answer so many questions. I think it's valuable.
Cool. That's it on the budget calendar. You guys have any questions? Kate, copier fleet discussion?
Copier fleet discussion, okay. So I have a little fact sheet here that I wanted to hand out. Um, and as I'm doing this, I will. Give you the, the five-second version of, of the question slash problem slash decision point. So our bidding policy, purchasing policy says that we will bid out anything that's over. A purchase that's over twenty thousand dollars and then it has a lot of um. Other bits and pieces to it, but um historically, we have always purchased. Copiers on a lease purchase agreement as an entire fleet. And in my experience, we've done five-year leases. And at the end of the five years, all your machines are dead and you go out and you get a whole bunch of new machines. The last time we did this was in the spring of twenty seventeen. And we went out and did our RFP process. We went through the usual um rigmarole, which is to accept bids. We had six vendors, I think, who bid. Um, you know, we went through a, a very rigorous and I'll analytical. Analytical review of the bids. Um, and ultimately, we selected Business Equipment Unlimited, known as BEU. Um, and Konica Minolta machines. We bought thirty-nine machines and at the um, I say probably something like suggestion or recommendation in my notes. But it was really at the insistence of the IT director at the time, John Lim. We really can't have a five-year lease, she said. Copiers are now pieces of tech equipment. We're gonna use them for centralized printing. We're gonna use them for scanning. We're gonna use them for email. We need these tech devices to not have a five-year lifespan because they're gonna be useless to us. They're gonna be big doorstops at the end. So we worked really hard to come up with pricing so that we could afford a three-year lease. At the time, we also said, well, you know, if we do this, then maybe when the lease is up. We might not have to replace a hundred percent of the fleet. Sort of a side comment, oh, by the way. Well, so this year, the lease is done. We made our last payment in, in August. The three years are up and so I started out talking with IT about my usual, let's do an RFP. And let's get the process started and get ready to replace these machines. Um, we sat down with BEU twice. We went through um service data and um. The number of paper counts and, I'm not gonna use the right words, but um basically the usage that the machines had had. Um, and long story short, most of the machines have a ton of useful life left. Because of that short lease term, they're not dead. They're in really great shape. Um, I have a recommendation from BEU based on service records and based on the volume that the machines have done. And what their expected lifespan is to replace fourteen of them. To replace fourteen machines out of a fleet of thirty-nine across the district means that you're gonna have. A mixture of old and new machines. I like the idea. I'm not gonna go out and replace a machine that doesn't need to be replaced yet. I think it's, it's smart and, you know, talking with Dawn in IT. Um, this is really the way that we should be doing this. We should be on a multi-year replacement cycle, just like we do with other tech equipment. Right? So my quandary and my, my dilemma is. If I, do I go through a bid process? Because replacing fourteen machines is gonna cost us somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars. So technically, it would fall under the purchase agreement policy. Um, by, you know, by dollar value. Um, but if I go through a bid process and I have a price come in from a different vendor. For fourteen machines. Will that vendor be able to provide Konica Minolta machine, which is what we want because that's what we have in our fleet now. And we like them and they work well with our systems. Um, if they're able to provide Konica Minolta machines. Uh, and at a lower price, then do we have two different vendors and when you go to this copier, there's gonna be a tag on it that says. Call Smith Office Products and there's a copier over here that has a different tag on it that says call BEU. We have a bunch of different service reps crisscrossing one another and, I mean, from, from a business efficiency standpoint. It could get a little wonky. Um, so again, talking with IT, they're like, well, really what you need to do is you need to get BEU to give you a good price. And just let them replace a portion of the fleet. So I asked them what that would look like, um, and you'll see in my notes, I, this basically describes like. The background to all of this. Um, but what we asked them to do was if you were go, if you were gonna sell us fourteen machines, what would that look like? And they pointed out, first of all, that they um are the winning bid on a national government contract. So their, you know, their theory or argument was that, you know, they've already been through a bid process. And that it's been vetted by this national purchasing consortium for public entities. Okay, that's nice. Um, the second thing was that they said because of that national purchasing contract, they would be able to give us the same prices that we paid in. August of twenty seventeen, which is kinda nice. Um, and they would be able to continue the service contract for the entire fleet at the same price that we're currently paying without any increases. It's a nice deal. Um, it's uh, I think a reasonable deal and I think the pricing is very good. I think it's very competitive, but I still have that wonder about, you know, the process. And is this something where we would set aside the bidding policy and say, no, this is a different way of doing things? And, you know, this is, this is how we wanna approach it. And I don't expect this team to say yea or nay to that tonight, but I wanna put it out there. Sandy and I have talked about it a little bit. I think this is the first Diane and I have had a chance to. Say anything about it. Um, but I, I find myself in a bit of a dilemma and um. I know that the, the copier business, the copy office products business is very competitive. I have a ton of vendors who would really love to have our business.
If we opened it up to bid, would they go with this particular configuration as their bid?
Um, I think what we would do, and I, again, I haven't really sort of parsed this all the way out because I'm, I'm stuck in the process, but. I think what we would do is we would put out an RFP for fourteen copiers cuz that's all we need, right?
Can you say fourteen Konica Minolta, like the same brand?
Yep, yep.
So that would prevent people who don't have that from.
Exactly. And I know that in, at the time, in twenty seventeen, I don't know if this is still true. BEU was the only um vendor that had the contract with Konica Minolta to provide those machines. There may be more than one in New England that might bid. Um, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna go through a bid process just because either. You know, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna just say, well, yeah, we're putting it out to bid, but we're only gonna, we only want Konica Minolta product.
I just pulled up the policy and, and it says that you can forego the. Well, that you can do a competitive bidding or an RFP and that you can forego both of those if. Um, the superintendent basically has good cause to make that determination.
That is absolutely true. It says that you don't have to bid if there's a compelling reason not to. And so my question is, does this rise to the level of a compelling reason? Um, and, you know, I, I, I feel like it does. I mean, I feel like it's good business practice. But I also don't wanna just sort of say, oh, yeah, this is, this is what we're gonna do.
What, what if you had to say um, sort of justify your position that it's a compelling reason, what, what would your argument be?
Um, I think it would be based on the fact that you don't want your fleet to be. A bunch of different machines. You want for the sake of the IT team and the networking and the end users, you want them all to be the same.
With the same service vendor.
Um, and the service vendor is really important because if I am a beleaguered secretary at Wentworth School. And somebody says, our copiers are jammed. I don't really wanna have to think about which vendor to call, um, or, you know, whether the toner for this vendor comes on Tuesdays. But the toner for that vendor comes on Thursdays. So there's a business efficiency piece. Um, I also found it, you know, quite pleasant that BEU is willing to honor those prices because they could very easily bump those. Um, at the beginning of a new complete contract.
Let me, let me ask you this question. I, I agree with you, but um, I'm. Once you entered it, enter into sort of this staggered lease-to-buy program.
Then you've kinda stuck with it, right?
Always stuck with the same vendor, right? If, if that's your rationale, or.
Exactly. And that's part of the wonder, you know, it's like, well, so that if we, if we say this is the right argument to replace fourteen copiers this year. And then next year, it's gonna be ten copiers, we'll, we'll just keep doing the same thing and BEU is our vendor forever. Um, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily true, but it is the way that you would, you know, the way that you would think if you're doing bits and pieces. Um, you would have to then make it a strategic decision to have a wholesale change. Because there was a better product out there and another vendor was available. It's just, it's kicked, kicked me out of my normal way of thinking of this and so I'm really processing it with you guys. I'm just sort of trying to figure out what makes sense and um, Don Beijen is going, well, yeah, you know, this makes sense. If you were in a, in corporate land, you'd do this and it's just, it just makes sense.
I mean, if we go to bid though and we say Konica Minolta, cuz I buy the argument, I still like wanting to keep them all the same. That makes sense to me. But we can. We can control for that by putting that in the RFP. Is there a chance that another vendor comes back and is significantly cheaper? Or does it seem like this is like a really good rate? Cuz they're based off prices from three years ago?
I don't know for a fact that it's a really good rate. I could do some research on that, find out. I, I don't know, I can't really correct for the variable of a vendor really wanting to get your business and like cutting the price. To get in the door. Um, but I also, I, I do need to find out.
Especially at this lower number of machines, right? There might not be enough in it for them.
To make it worth their while. I, but I do wanna know, are there other. Preferred vendors or whatever they call it.
And what are the costs associated with putting it out to bid over an RFP?
My time, IT's time.
Have to do a, a publication?
Yeah, we, we would put a um notice in the paper, but I mean, that's.
It's not like a thousand dollars?
Um, I don't think we could, we would need to spend a thousand dollars, but you know, you're right, there would be a little bit of an advertising cost. We posted on our website. We, actually, what I would end up doing is sending it out to the vendors that I already know about cuz they're all calling me every fifteen minutes, right? Why are you going out to bid? I've got all their business cards. I've met all their brothers and their cousins and, you know.
One in dining.
Um, yeah, no, I don't take. Yeah, no, I don't take wine and dining, I take cookies. Only Girl Scout cookies.
How long are they willing to hold the pricing and service contract for?
The pricing they would, they would hold for us, they would honor for us if we made the purchase coming up in the summer.
So for this neck, just one set?
For this next year, yeah. I didn't talk to them about what it would look like in ensuing years. They did say, and you know, again, we were going through this big spreadsheet of all the machines and their, their lifespans and what kind of work they've been put through. They did say that this year would probably be the most costly because we'd be replacing the biggest, highest volume machines. And then you'd have two years where it would probably be a little bit less because you'd be taking older machines, but they're the, the less high-volume ones. But then you'd probably have a bump up again three years ahead. So it's, it, it is a def- definitely a different way of looking at how to do it. The other piece that we could, that we could do is to save a little bit of money on financing cause with the lease purchase agreement, like I said, it was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars three years ago. We did finance that through Gorum Leasing and then we paid like two and a half percent APR. If we were doing it piecemeal, we could look at putting it into our operating budget and just say, you know, this is an annual cost, it's not gonna go up and down. Instead of making a lease payment and paying interest, we could probably afford to buy them outright.
But are the Conica machines still the, the most desirable?
They really are the top of the line, yeah, according to our IT fronts, as far as for educational use.
So if you don't think that the cost is significant to bid or to submit an RFP and we can draft it so that it, it limits the, the results to only those machines that we want, is there a downside to putting it out for bidding to, to see?
The only downside would be that a lower price comes in and we end up splitting the service contract, I think.
Oh, to purchase it and then the service contract could be more, you're saying? Or would that, the service contract?
Well, okay, so now if we're thinking, if we're thinking outside of the box, would BEU continue to be our service contract for machines that they didn't sell to us? I don't think so.
I'd be shocked if they did that.
I don't think so. We do have a managed print program with them for the little printers, which they didn't necessarily sell to us. Some of them are old, some of them are new.
And that would be a two-year dilemma we would be in, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I don't know enough about, I mean, I don't know enough about where the printers are or how many there are in each building, like what it would be.
There are thirty-nine of them.
If there are way, well, is there a way to, is there a way to be strategic about where the current printers are?
Cause there are different kinds of machines.
So that we have one provider who goes to the high school, but then we put our other different, you know what I'm saying?
I get that.
I could say all kinds of suggestions that are not valuable because.
Like, you know, like there are.
They're all at different.
Some larger machines in every building.
Cause we get pick and blue machines.
Get them in colors, color-coded, we could put stickers on them. Now, they are scattered, so every building has.
There's no way to say, okay, we would service all of Pleasant Hill under this new contract.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, your, your, your argument's a good argument, I mean, and I'm not saying it's your argument or that you.
Right, as we talk this through.
But, but the rationale.
It's points to ponder, right?
The rationale makes sense to me, except for the fact that when I think like, well, then we'll always be in that position.
Right, at what point do we go out and look and see if there's a better price out there or?
Right, cause then you'd have to do like an entire change all at once, even for some machines that weren't necessarily needing it, right?
That were relatively new, yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and the other piece down the road is.
You know, like if we stayed like.
It's in the future, yes, yeah, in the future.
If copier technology should suddenly morph into something completely different, then you know, we'd be thinking about doing a wholesale change like that.
If we go out for RFP, do we have to, we have to, legally have to accept that lowest offer?
No, we, we have to accept, our policy is to accept the best bid, not the low bid.
Including the offer that they gave us here that was.
Right, right.
So I see, I mean, I know it's your time, but to me, it seems like the right thing to do is to go out to process and if it's significantly lower, that to me might make up for this, this inefficiencies that we see on the service side. If it's not significantly lower.
Well, plus it's our policy to do it.
That's, that's kinda, that's my opinion. I, I don't know that this necessarily needs to go to vote or anything, but that's just my opinion.
Well, yeah, I think that the way the policy describes it is like the superintendent brings to you a, a reason why he wants to go outside the normal process. So I'll talk with Dawn about it a little bit more, I do wanna find out, like, if we say Conica Minolta machines, does that mean there's, you know, five people who could bid or is it one person or is it two? Or what, what does that do to the parameters of the bid process? Because if there are only a couple of vendors and you only have to look at a couple of proposals and you only have to rate them and it is, it is a time commitment, I mean, you really have to set aside a couple of full days to go through bids like that. But if there's only a couple of them, it would, it would be easier. So I'll find out a little bit more information and then I'll bring that info back to you guys and we can figure out what to do. And we don't have to do it today, so, but I wanted to get it out there so we could know thinking about it. The things we think of.
Two other things, joint workshop discussion, so Leanne made a formal request for the action meeting by town council and impact fees of their next meeting next week. She asked if Kate would be there as well as a member of the finance committee, I cannot be there, I'll be out of town. If one of you are able to be there, that would be great.
I just saw that email.
If you can't, then I'll let Leanne know and maybe like Nick from Long Beach planning can be there. It's um.
It's their regular meeting, so it'd be seven P M.
Wednesday night meeting.
I'm gonna go ahead and put it on my calendar.
The fourth.
March fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fifth.
No, we're the fifth.
March fourth.
Yes, I was looking at February, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the fourth.
I don't see any reason why I can't be there.
Is there an expectation that we would be doing any further presentation?
Nope.
So it's just an action item for them, they heard all about it, they vote up or down and we're just there in the audience to be helpful.
In case there's questions, yeah.
Cause I thought my last presentation was pretty good with my squawky voice.
Yeah, it, uh, maybe we would just need to provide them with any previous documentation that we already shared.
Right, they could add that to, into their.
I, I, I have that, so I can email that too. So Kate, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm just putting it on my calendar right now, um, March fourth at seven.
It's in the calendar.
I will let Leanne know. Otherwise, I don't.
You're my partner?
Thing you wanna talk about?
You're the liaison.
I'm the liaison anyway, I try and go anyway, so that's, that's fine.
Are you happy with having your joint workshop done? You should just move on to the next topic.
No, no, I can't wait to hear what you guys think about it. I thought it was kinda fun watching Sarah try to get people to actually agree that there was some consensus in the room about something.
I thought that both of the presenters really did provide very important information for everyone to have. Like, I felt like I even, you know, like I knew a lot about the enrollment side of things, but I felt like I learned a lot about the town side of things in terms of permitting and, and that type of thing, so.
From Jay's presentation, yeah.
I felt like it was really useful.
And it seemed to me that Jay and Rebecca had had a really productive conversation.
Yes, they had met together prior to.
When they came, they had both agreed on a, on a set of standards.
Yeah, they were on the same page.
Definitely.
She probably couldn't. I think it was, it was nice for that group to hear the level of professionalism of both Jay and Rebecca and their, you know, their deep understanding of this stuff and ability to articulate what's going on, I think, was really impressive.
Yeah, they're super impressive.
Yeah, it provides the opportunity to have more informed conversation, right? Versus operating on everyone's perceptions of what they think may or may not be happening.
I also thought it was interesting that the piece about the fractionalized permits.
Yeah, that was just like intriguing to me.
If I'm using the right expression, that one permit could actually be only a portion of a permit if it was a small building.
Or half a permit or a two-thirds permit.
And I, I felt like there were a lot of little light bulbs on the council going off of, oh, really? Does that make sense in today's world? Because we're, we've all been talking about, you know, moving into a tiny house and living on a boat and what was it, you know? So who's to say that I can't put five people in my tiny little house and then impact town services?
I'm a little, I'm sure you guys are too, like I left a little worry that we didn't get to a complete unanimous agreement as to what our single source of truth was when it came to enrollment data and so I wonder if that's something for like a joint communications. Cause I read, the leader in the article kinda referenced that as the enrollment study as like the study, the study. Which it should, right?
Right, because what else is there?
Well, it's our opinion that it should, I guess. But I'm wondering if that's maybe something to be picked up by the community, if you guys were having joint meetings.
What I heard was that there, there were opinions that we didn't need to have collaboration on that.
Right.
That, that was, that was my interpretation of what some individuals were saying.
The other thing is I feel like that, it was only coming from one person, right?
Yeah.
There was other, and some people didn't express a strong opinion.
I thought I, I thought I heard it from maybe more than.
Did you?
Yeah, and, and at that point, the discussion to me didn't make much sense in terms of collaborating if, if other, if people didn't see a value in that.
Yeah.
In, in coming to a, an agreed-upon set of data points.
I, I just don't know how we solve for it, right? Cause at the end of the day, it's a P, it's a, it's a, it's a communication and sort of how we get information out, right? Like we're, especially during the budget process, like we're going to be talking about, like you just said, like our little enrollment bucket, right? And that's going to be based off of this study.
Well, we're gonna use that, but I think that what I heard was we can't preclude anybody independently from using their own data points, that that's what they chose to be.
So I guess the, the question is, do they mean that they wanna use their own data sets of whatever kind they are to inform their own deliberations about the town budget as a whole? Or are they thinking in terms of refuting what the school department has to say?
I think that both have occurred.
I tend to think it's the former, that various pieces of information, I mean, it, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, but not really, like there, there are different ways to weigh the data. And so I think that there are town councils who expressed an interest in wanting to give weight to certain portions of it over other portions. For example, you know, using various models, like, well, Rebecca gave us six different models that we could look at and you know, this idea that we would, we, that we would use one, blah, blah, blah.
We can use one.
And so like giving more weight to that versus looking at the study as a whole
Sure.
is, is really just a difference of interpretation of something that's available and we've all agreed on.
Except if your numbers are different and then you go out to inform your community.
I agree, that's totally different.
To inform, which has happened, to inform the community and, and support your analysis, then that creates a real troubling dynamic.
I, I agree, I agree, that should not be happening.
I think, I guess it's just, you make a good point, right? I think it's just our duty to everything that we talk about when it comes to the budget and this, to just source it. And like this is being built off of what we agree to as our single source of truth.
We're basing our.
Right. Which is available for anyone to be able to download and read and, and come to their conclusions about.
Right, and I think there was a lot of comment about what does it mean for a data projection to be accurate or true or come true or, you know, what does that really mean? Well, what it really means is from a practical standpoint, we're seeing the numbers play out according to the projections that we have and therefore, we feel it's reasonable to assume that those projections will continue to be more or less on target.
And if, and if this people don't fundamentally buy into that, then there's. But then that's where we have to say, we don't, that, and that's, I said this during the workshop and I didn't mean to sound like we don't have to agree, cause we are absolutely agreeing that Rebecca's study is the only enrollment study that we are using. But if you literally aren't someone who thinks that this is something that can be projected and you don't put any weight in projections, then that's your prerogative.
Well, it's the only enrollment study.
Right.
I'm gonna start saying cite your source.
Just walk around with like a placard with footnotes on it.
Give that to me, AP students.
Circle back, um, communications. They, town council offered a joint communications community meeting for next Monday, but neither Hillary nor Kristen were able to attend. So I'm going to go and just sit there and make sure that if there are voices that need to come from the school board side that they at least have our perspective, but it's not technically a joint meeting because we couldn't get enough people to go. I will report back at the full board meeting how it goes.
I was wondering about the last item on the agenda that we didn't get to, which was let's all get back together and talk about prioritizing capital projects.
It's the elephant in the room.
Well, it's a, it's a pretty big, big animal, whether it's an elephant or, you know, depends on which end of it you grab, right? Like the old story.
Sure, I'm familiar, but.
You don't know that one? Like the, the blind man, the, he gets the trunk and he says, oh, it's a snake. And then the other one gets a foot and he says, oh, it's a tree. I'll, I'll try and get a good version of it for you with some pictures for next time. Blind man and el-, blind men and the elephant.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So we didn't really get any place with that, right?
So in conversations as liaison, um, there's, there's a real struggle, I think, from everybody that I've spoken with, both on our board and their council, that nobody can really wrap their head around what that would look like. You know, what, I, I made a joke now several times, like spoiler alert, our priority is the school. I don't need to have a workshop where the school board comes and, and, and unless town council wants a proposal from the community center, the library, the turf, the school, all at once. But then what does that even look like? Do they sit and we all present to them? Like ultimately, it's their decision. And so I, I mean, I would love for them to make some movement and express their priorities, but I don't know what that looks like.
For the problem, the problem with that, as I see it, is that I hear their argument being, well, we haven't, at times, we haven't heard from the school board about the schools and, and like, well, we've provided you to our meetings and we've asked you to come to our table and, and so if their rationale for the reason why the other capital improvements are moving to the top of the list is because those people are coming to them, then even if they know that it's our priority, then there might be value, if that's.
Being more direct.
If that's what it takes for them to wanna recognize it as a, as a.
Right, how do we get recognized so that we're given equal consideration?
A, a super simple question is if it has to be on your five-year capital plan, where does a new school go on our five-year capital plan? Put it up there the same way that the libraries had it on there?
Or can we be put on it, I mean?
Yeah.
Well, we have a capital budget and our capital budget has a five-year span to it every year. It's just a spreadsheet that says, you know, this year we're doing some roofing on the high school and next year we're doing some roofing on the middle school.
So we can say, next year we're gonna build a school?
We can put a placeholder in there and then it's, and then it's there.
Yeah.
I have no idea what amount we'd put out there or if it would, you know, upset people that we put something on a document.
Yeah, there's something, like, I don't know.
Is that, but then I have heard people say, well, you know, it's not real because it's not on your five-year plan.
Yeah, well, we could say TBA.
Can we do that in the budget, though?
The budget's just a piece of paper. I mean, it's a capital project document that we try to be truthful and thoughtful about that says.
Doesn't need to have dollar or not?
It would have to have some kind of a dollar amount.
It can't be TBA.
I don't know.
TBD, DDD. I, I, I just wonder sometimes if the more we treat it like it's, it's needs to happen and if that's, I don't know, everybody always says that's how you make something a reality.
Right, acceptance, acceptance narrative. So that's, I mean, this is definitely an ongoing discussion. I hope the other committees are, if you guys are on other committees and this comes up, I hope that it's being discussed. Because I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want nothing to happen. Cause it was this agenda item and we couldn't get there as a group.
Maybe with long range planning, I think we have somebody, something on Thursday this week, right? With long range planning, maybe we can bring it up again and just keep talking about it.
Yeah.
On, on, on that, no, I don't think I saw the turf discussion on our agenda for this week.
I thought it was an executive session item.
What was it?
I think so.
Oh, but it's sort of couched in legalese where it's something about a. School department property, something, something.
I think it is an executive session.
Yeah, seven point O, motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing the condition of school town properties.
Six point one, which is a motion to request that they, that they do it.
Oh, okay.
So there's a vote on requesting.
I'm missing a lot this week.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at.
Maybe I only made it to six.
It is, it is.
Okay, I missed it. All right, great, I'm gonna have to see that.
Good. Are we to the end of our agenda?
We are, sorry, unless you wanna, you wanna discuss the TIF.
I do.
Okay.
Mostly so that Kate knows that this is out there being discussed in the universe and maybe we can look into it. And or maybe someone who knows the answers, but I, I have seen it now a couple of times, this idea. And I'm not gonna get those details of this all right, but basically that. The larger our TIF district, it becomes and the more valuable the, the TIF districts in the town become. That the more tax sheltering that can exist and tax sheltering is a certain percentage of our EPS formula. And so is this something that the school board should take a vested interest in informing town council? When they are making decisions about potential investments in their TIF district? Either as an incentive to, you know, do this because it would change our EPS formula, like I don't. And since it's being talked about in public, I, I don't, I feel like I haven't, I mean, I have no idea. I don't even know where to start to look.
Okay.
To verify this kind of information.
What your assumption is, is that the larger that becomes, the lower our EPS. Like the money that we get on the two seventy nine would be.
So it's actually.
More, that we could actually increase our state subsidy.
Okay.
By increasing our tax sheltering that's happening in our TIF districts. And if that is something that's true, I mean, that certainly impacts. You know, our school budget and is this something that the town council, and that we have an opinion about? And that the town council should be very well read and versed on when they make these kind of decisions because.
So I, I did, I think.
You know.
Right, it should be a thought, thoughtful consequence.
Exactly.
Um and I, I did understand, I think, what the question is and I did, I did a little bit of research and there's a lot of um. There's a lot of writing out there about TIF districts. Or um segregating some of the value of your town into a TIF district that doesn't create tax value.
Right.
Um is that fair when it comes to the actual value of your town versus what's reported? Um to the state and used for calculation of subsidy? So two things, one is the EPS formula, people throw that phrase around. The formula is actually the process by which the state determines what it costs to run education K twelve in your town.
Okay.
The formula is the first four pages of this thing. And it includes how many teachers you have, what's your student teacher ratios are, how many guidance counselors you have? What do you have for transportation, what you have for operating costs? It's basically the formula is to figure out what it would take to run your schools. It's woefully inadequate and in, you know, i- insufficient in the real world. But the place where the, the TIF would come in would not be in the formula, it would be in the determination of the district's ability to pay. So it's at the end of the formula, they figure out here's how much your, it should cost to run education in Scarborough and let's say it's fifty thousand, uh fifty million dollars. And then, once that number's been determined, how much is Scarborough gonna be able to pay? And the difference is how much you get in subsidy. And so the place where the TIF would come into the um equation would be not in figuring out. The cost of education, but in figuring out the town's ability to pay. And so what I've read, you know, some of this literature is about, is a, is a town that's taking advantage of TIF districts? Really being unfair in terms of what their ability to pay is? Are they leaving tax dollars on the table and then asking the state to give them extra money? Because they don't have those tax dollars to spend on education, to put it in a nutshell. Um then if you come down to whether towns should be creating TIF districts. Specifically to make their value.
Yes.
Look less.
Right.
You know, then the, you know, is that an immoral thing to do? Should you really be paying your share? Should you really be getting, taxing people appropriately for the value of the property that exists in your town? And not asking the state to fill in the blanks because you decided not to tax that particular neighborhood or that particular project. Um so that's like the, the um conversation that's going on in the, in the web universe.
Yeah.
Um I didn't find any specific documentation about like how you would actually strategically set out. To make yourself look poorer, I guess, you know, and therefore leverage the amount of subsidy you get. I think that the thing that's interesting about Scarborough is that right now, we're not really getting subsidy based on our ability to pay. Anyway.
Right.
Right? So if we have a TIF district or we don't, or if we have a lower valuation that we, than we could potentially have. That's not how our subsidy is being calculated in the first place. They've already decided that we could afford to pay way more than what we're actually going to pay. Because they're gonna go by this, but the minimum receiver statute and give us a little extra. I think if we ever climbed above minimum receiver status, then you'd have a moral quandary, you know? Are you, are you really under representing yourself in terms of what you have available for tax value? Um a question I would throw back on to the, the people who know these things would be. The state always says they use main revenue services numbers for the valuation of the town. They don't use the town's actual valuation set by the assessor in Scarborough. Um main revenue services comes up with a number that they say is Scarborough's taxable value or tax property value. Um so I don't know if main revenue services takes into account TIFs or not. You know, we might not be collecting taxes on that property, but is it actually included in what main revenue services says we own? Cause one of the things that was a big deal for us a couple of years ago was that main revenue services was saying the value of property in Scarborough. Is, let's say, three billion dollars and I'm not sure I even have the right order of magnitude. But Scarborough was saying, no, actually, you know, our town properties are valued at much less than that. Well, they were valued at much less than that because we hadn't had a revaluation in ten years and now that we've had the revaluation. The numbers that we're showing locally and that the assessors using in Scarborough are much closer to what the state is saying. Um that our comparable property values are. So I think the state has a way of um adjusting for local variances. And how you price your, your property. I'm just not sure how that works. We have to ask one of our town counselors who knows these things, or it sounds like main revenues are.
That's very well explained.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm glad I could address it. It didn't seem like I was sure I was getting the right question, but I.
No, I think.
I know what's being said.
Yeah.
Awesome, guys. Meeting adjourned.